Are there any, moving on to the section for the agenda, are there any changes to the consent agenda items that anybody needs to have pulled to discuss?
The transportation.
I don't think that's there anymore.
I think it's the other one you want, the item one.
It's in the, transportation is under the superintendent's report.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Are there any other items to the consent agenda? Seeing none, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ballo, can I have a second? Commissioner Seguino, discussion. I'd like to make a motion to add a point. I'm going to have a brief discussion prior to public comment regarding the question on the Guidance Department and how it fits the goals of the school district. Does anyone else have a change to the agenda? Mr. Seguino?
I'd like to make a motion to make an announcement on negotiations prior to public comment.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended agenda as these fit signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Motion passes. So I'll start, so there was a question, this is for the public, so there was a question on the Guidance Department at Burlington High School. There were some things that don't exist. There's no such thing as a strategic plan and vision for the Burlington High School Guidance Department. We don't do that. We have one set of rules that all departments have to abide by. If we had too many visions and strategic plans out there, there would be a bear trying to get all them tied back up to the goal vision, I'm sorry, the district vision and goals and plans. So, there's no such thing that exists. What we have agreed to do is, in September, right now, we're going to target a discussion by Superintendent Obang to do a discussion on the overall district guidance principles and how it fits with the district goals, and that'd be on the agenda for September. There was also a question specifically about some resignations that took place at the high school. We cannot talk about that in open forum. So it's never, it's never going to happen. We can't discuss it. And so I just want to make it clear that there's employment law and proprietary information that can't be discussed. The board can't do that, sorry. Does anybody have any question for me on the board? All right, I'll close my piece. Commissioner Seguino?
I'd like to update the public here tonight on teacher contract negotiations. As many of you know, the Fact Finder Advisory Report was issued on July 17th. This part of the process is required by statute governing teacher negotiations. The board issued a press release on July 27th with comments on the report, and you can find that on the district's negotiations webpage. To briefly summarize, the report provided a helpful analysis and some useful recommendations. While there are some deficiencies with the report, it provides a path forward that the board has acted on in its negotiations with the BEA. The board has and will continue to ask for and make itself available for as many meetings in which parties are willing to make such meaningful proposals and concessions as it takes to reach settlement. Before the release of the Fact Finder Report, the board's negotiation team reached out to the BEA multiple times to identify dates to continue negotiations after the release of the report. After indicating it was unable to meet on several dates we proposed, the BEA agreed to a session with the board on July 21. The BEA indicated at that meeting that they were not prepared to discuss salary or health care, two areas where significant differences remain. The focus of that meeting on July 21 was therefore on operational items. After the board provided the BEA with a set of ideas for consideration, the BEA team then informed us that they were ending the session and would get back to us regarding a follow-up meeting date. The follow-up session was scheduled for August 8th, that is, today. However, the board was subsequently informed yesterday that only the only BEA team member in attendance would be their Vermont NEA representative. As a result, we shared additional proposals with the Vermont NEA representative today, but no further progress could be made on reaching any agreement. The next full team bargaining session is scheduled for August 24th, and this session will be pivotal. In negotiations, I want to just emphasize that the board remains committed to a contract that first and foremost meets the needs of our students and that is also fair to teachers while respecting the ability of the community to fund our school budget. And we are committed to achieving this goal before August 31st. There's a good deal of misinformation circulating about negotiations, and to address that, we will be posting regularly to the district's negotiations webpage, so please check there for updates. We know this period of time is one of tension and anxiety and worry about school disruptions. These tensions can and have led to personal attacks and rapid spread of rumors. It does not need to be this way. While negotiations can be tough, the board is committed to respectful, honest engagement and public comments focused on the issues. These are legitimately difficult issues to resolve, and our best selves are needed to work on an agreement. We hope all of the community will support all parties in taking the high road in the coming weeks. Thank you.
I'll close this section now, and I'll move on to the board report. I'm sorry, I'll move on to public comment. Can we have the, can we just get the, thank you. You got it? Get the time?
Sure.
You're the rock.
Thanks.
First person on the list is Adam Holt.
I didn't give you much time, did I?
Adam Holt's not here?
Did you hear that one off the ding?
Oh, sorry.
Right there, please.
That's fine.
Hello. My name's Adam Holt, and I have been, I guess, instructed to come ask you guys regarding Act 166 funding. My understanding is that funding is not eligible for any child after the school's cutoff date. I contacted Burlington School District. They referred me to the Agency of Education, and when speaking with the Agency of Education, Act 166 determinations come down to the school board themselves. I emailed all the individuals to the school board a couple, about two weeks ago regarding this, and it's the fact that my son will be, is enrolled in pre-K. He will be take, he will be in pre-K this year, and he will be turning three September 28th, which is just 10% of the school year. 90% of this upcoming year, he will be three years old. So I'm simply, I was instructed to come here and ask you guys to consider funding for my child under Act 166. That's simply it. I don't know much more where to go or what to do, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mike Fisher?
Good evening. I want to second what Stephanie said about negotiations and respect. I know this is a crucial part of the negotiations, and I want to speak to the board about the fact that you can be tough negotiators and be respectful at the same time. So what does that mean? I have two things, I think, that I saw last year. No union bashing. The union is the teachers. They have help from the state and union officials, state and national union officials. You have help from your consultants and lawyers. So I expect the union to be respected as a representative of the teachers. More importantly, I urge you not to impose working conditions if you get stuck. As we experienced last year, that was seen as an escalation and an instigation, and I was not surprised by the response of the teachers. And I have the same message for the teachers and for the public, that, like Stephanie said, I completely agree with you. You can negotiate with respect. Yes, misinformation's going to get out there, but how we handle it and how you treat each other at the table says a lot. I'm a taxpayer and I'm a parent. I don't know what the end result should be. I'm not taking a position. The only position I'm taking is that the work should continue. There should not be a strike. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Wool. I am PTO Chair at Edmunds Middle School and Chair of the BHS Boosters Parent Volunteer Organization at BHS. Last Tuesday, I spoke at the Diversity and Equity Committee meeting to those members, and I would like to share on record tonight what I addressed in the Diversity Equity meeting. In the words of our BSD Equity Council, "We are responsible for ensuring that everyone in our district feels valued, safe, and respected. When three licensed professionals resign and one qualified school registrar resigns at the busiest time of the school year to become CBU's registrar, our community would like to ask our guidance director, our BHS principal, our HR director, and our district superintendent, do you know why? Our community concern is that if our leadership does not model equity to their own colleagues, how can they model it to our students or be respected in a district that strives to be equitable? We cannot develop a strategic plan for a student-centered guidance department with a top-down approach without student input or staff collaboration. If the vision and guiding principles of the department are being reestablished, great, then state the vision of the district and this department. Show us the skill set. Engage your student body and ignite the team of guidance counselors. Tonight, it must be acknowledged that our community and our colleagues here in the state of Vermont are privy to our situation and are also concerned with the impact these resignations have on our students and faculty. If BHS is a leadership model, then we should model equity and inclusion. It has been suggested that an impartial investigator could, in essence, report on the climate in our guidance department. If a cleansing is what the district and the school board goal was, then you succeeded. But know that the impact of this falls on all our high school students. The breadth and depth for all at BHS has been seriously diminished, and with three weeks until the start of school, an entire department must be up and running with licensed professionals ready to meet the needs for the first time of serving our 1,010 students. To reiterate, four qualified and respected guidance professionals have resigned from one department in our largest school in the district, serving our greatest student population at a critical time in their lives. It is time for the district leaders to tell us or inquire to them individually, why did they all resign? And I just want to say-
That's two minutes.
Great. I want to just address one comment that you had in the beginning, which was about the district goals. Back in May, I wrote the district department and our principal and asked her what we should do about this situation, and the BHS principal responded to me, "Hi, Claire, we are busy finalizing schedules for next school year on May 17th. We are working with the district Diversity and Equity Department and others to reestablish a vision and guiding principles that will help us move forward in the guidance department. Stay tuned. Sincerely, Tracy."
Good, thank you.
Thanks. Patty Wesley?
Hello, my name is Patty Wesley, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am a longtime Burlington resident and the parent of a 2013 BHS graduate. I was also a school counselor at Burlington High School for 26 years and the director of the department for nine years. I retired last summer in July 2016. Like others speaking tonight, I'm concerned by the resignations of four valued employees from the BHS counseling office this year, especially since I knew that those fine people had no intention of leaving BHS, a school they loved and a place to which they were fiercely committed. Why did they leave? One narrative that has surfaced in the school and in the community is that they somehow could not cope with my retirement and that they sabotaged the success of the new leadership at the school and in the department. I want to interrupt that narrative tonight. Frankly, I find this idea deeply offensive to me as a leader and to them as competent and caring professionals. I also find it inherently sexist. I cannot imagine this being said about a group of male employees. There are many reasons I find this suggestion ridiculous. Three out of four of these people had already experienced changes in department leadership in their years at BHS, as well as changes in administration without stress or discord. They participated in the hiring of the new director last year and were perfectly prepared to work with him. These are not people who are resistant to or unwilling to cope with change. Counselors are intimately involved in not only supporting but facilitating change in their jobs. They care deeply about their students, colleagues, and their school. What motivation would they have to not make it work? Here are the facts. Four people left the counseling department within three months. That calls out for the school board and district management to do a serious review of what led these people to leave. Personal interviews would seem essential. Any well-run organization would do an objective review of how this possibly could have happened, and the community needs to know that these concerns have been addressed and are not being brushed aside. The community needs to know the outcome of the review and what steps are being taken so it doesn't happen again. A new school year looms ahead. A strong, caring, and supportive counseling department is essential at a high school. Our school will also be coping with the additional impact of a recent tragic death of a student this summer. Research clearly shows that the whole school community, students and adults alike, will experience additional stress related to recovery from that trauma, and those stress symptoms will surface throughout the year and beyond. I think it's important to ask, how will the caregivers in the school, counselors and teachers be supported so that they can be there for the students? I suggest that a climate of collaboration, respect, and good communication is key. People need to feel safe to do good work. That's not what happened last year at BHS, and it's critical that this be addressed before more good people leave. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yvette Amblobos?
Hello. My name is Yvette Amblobos. I've been a school counselor in the Burlington District for 21 years. During this time, I've had the honor of serving hundreds of Burlington students and families and the privilege of being colleagues with some of the best educators in the state of Vermont. As a school counselor at BHS, I have worked under the leadership of four principals and five guidance directors. I have always felt respected, valued, and valuable as a professional and a person in the Burlington School District, until last year. I can best describe my experience at BHS last year as one where I was ignored, silenced, shamed, and bullied. To the point that it created significant barriers to serving my students and families and colleagues to the level which I'm capable and they deserve. During our first meeting with our new director of guidance last August, we were informed that our roles as counselors had changed. We were not offered any clarity or rationale. In that first meeting, throughout the year and throughout the year, we asked for a clarification of our roles, the reasons behind the changes. We were consistently met with ambiguity, hostility, and blaming. For example, during a department meeting early in the fall, we were reminded that BHS school counselors were no longer the point people for our students when they needed social or emotional support. As a professional school counselor who is licensed, trained, experienced, serving students in this way for 20 years, I asked for more information. The response I received was a finger pointed across a desk into my face, followed by a loud angry voice telling me that I was the problem in the department. I asked too many questions, and I was unwilling to change. Despite this and other attempts to silence our questions and advocacy as a department around the best practices and services for students and families, we continued to ask questions. We voiced concerns that no member of the BHS counseling department was consulted or collaborated with around any changes in services. We asked why no needs assessment or other information was gathered in a systematic, transparent, or intentional way, including input from students, parents, faculty, staff, and other counselors prior to making changes. We asked who was making these decisions and based on what knowledge of our school, of the student needs, and the professional and ethical standards of school counselors. All inquiries were met with defensiveness and hostility and answered with vague references to the board and superintendent or left unanswered. In addition to ongoing lack of clarity, the counselors and registrar endured unprofessional, dishonest, and disrespectful behavior from the director in our office all year. Examples include ignoring us on a daily basis, tantruming when asked to participate in department services, like presenting college information to senior seminar classes, refusal to work with a high-risk student with potential self-harm ideation at the request of another staff member. In these and other countless examples, the other counselors and registrar in our office had to pick up and cover for his lack of communication, professionalism-
You got it short enough here, because it's over two minutes already.
Okay. I have a little bit longer. I'd like to respectfully ask you to finish.
You'll have to wait until somebody else. We just want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak, that's all.
Okay. Can I finish this thought?
You could also submit your comments to us if you want to.
I'm going to finish this thought. Thanks. Okay. So, at the request of another staff member-
You've only got about 15 seconds, I'm sorry.
In these and other countless examples, the other counselors and registrar in our office had to pick up and cover for his lack of communication, professionalism, follow-through, and day-to-day work as a school counselor and a director, so all students could continue to be served.
Thank you.
Larissa?
Hi, good evening. My name is Larissa Urban, and I've been 14 years as a school counselor at Burlington High School. It's difficult to be here, sitting with my former students and parents, but I also would like to speak on behalf of why I've resigned from my position at Burlington School District. I would have been starting my 25th year in public education this year. Prior to BHS, I worked in four other Vermont public high schools and have been exposed to a variety of working conditions as an educator. I'm here this evening to share with you why I've resigned from my position at BHS and to continue sharing why four of us have left our position, because I think you would want to know. In continuing with the thoughts, our department thoughts- Can I have the last page, Yvette? Throughout the year, counselors made ongoing attempts to address these and other concerns directly with the advisor, with our director, which was unsuccessful. Just the last page, thank you.
I just wanted you to be cautious, you only have about a minute left.
We also addressed our concerns with our director's supervisor, the principal of BHS, on several occasions. Although Ms. Rassico listened and offered a few interventions, the director in our department was not interested or engaged in hearing or working with us, evidenced by not making any sustainable changes in his professional practice or day-to-day treatment of us. As experienced professionals, we deeply believe in modeling respect, clarity, teamwork, honesty, and integrity. We were left with no choice but to leave BHS at the end of this school year. Ethically, we could not continue to be attached to a department or school led by administrators who refused to hear, respect, or value our professional experience and voices, knowing the extreme negative impact it was having and would continue to have on services for students, families, and colleagues. So although none of us started the 2016-17 school year thinking it would be our last year at BHS, these are the truths behind the resignation of three experienced school counselors and one highly competent registrar from the BHS counseling department. We believe that it is the Burlington community's right, and they deserve to be told the truth about what is happening. And my closing is, while I am now happily employed as the director of school counseling at Innesburg Falls High School, I would be much more happily employed as a school counselor at Burlington High School had this 2016-17 school year not been by far the most difficult professional year of my life. And I just want you to know, I hope, my hope in sharing this information is that you care deeply enough, that you will truly listen and support Principal Rassico, the faculty, students, and parents of the BHS community, and address the serious problem. They're asking questions. They're asking why, and I've also received a phone call from the Burlington Free Press this evening when I got home from work, asking why. So I hope that you want to know why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen McSweeney? Is Colleen McSweeney here? And Jim Holley?
Thank you. Well, I came with one thought in mind, but I do want to say that I'm really saddened to hear the stories that I've just heard, which kind of goes to what I wanted to talk about very briefly is. One of my hats is, I'm an administrator of a Facebook forum called Support Our Burlington Schools, and we have about, we're close to 1,000 community members, people in this community who care about Burlington schools. So in that role, there's certainly what gets put out there in the public way, but I also get a lot of private messages that tell me of various concerns that people have throughout the community. And one of the things I tell them is that an appropriate response is to bring it to the school board member in their district. And the other I say is, bring it to the school board, public comment, period. So hopefully that's the right path I can take, because there are a lot of concerns that people have that I think you guys should hear about, and some of them can be resolved very quickly, could be answered with maybe a misunderstanding, whatever. But anyway, I just wanted to take this forum to say, make sure that this, that people feel comfortable coming here and having their say. Mark, cutting, I know you've got to be timekeeper. At two minutes, sometimes giving a little bit of grace might have showed a little more compassion. But in general, I'm not criticizing. I like what you do, but I just wanted to say that. Now, my, so I'm going to do what I've asked other people to do. I have a pet peeve. It's nowhere near the size of some of these other, but it is this. It is about listening, and that, I've come to a couple of board meetings and wanted to be able to tell someone outside this world what was going on at the board meeting. There's no public access, internet access here. I asked, oh, I don't know, four or five months ago, I sent an email to every board member and to the administration, saying, can we get community, public internet access so that if people want to FaceTime a section, or they want to tweet out, or whatever they want to do? In this world, we should be able to have that. I got only one response. It was Jeff, not here. I thank him for it. His question was, what did the administration, how did they respond? I have no, nobody else responded, and something as trivial as flipping a switch should be doable, or at the very least, should be able to ask a question and get responses. And each one of you got an email directed to you, so what drives me a little nuts is, if you send a message, at the very least, reply, "Thank you for the message. I'll look into it." So again, I just, I just want to make sure that the community has a comfort level in being able to communicate with you, and that's, that's how we work together. That's how we're supportive of each other, because we really have some great people, both administration, board, teachers in the schools. We have a lot of great people. I just want to see you guys working well together. Thank you.
All right, that's everybody. So we'll close the comments, questions from the public, and open it up for any board reflections, if anyone has anything to say. Commissioner Curry?
I just wanted to reiterate that the comments that were made could be submitted to Brittany for dissemination to the board, so if those who did make comments wouldn't mind writing them. I know we heard from some of you who wrote ahead. Jim, I'm sorry I missed your email. I was on vacation. I'm just looking at it now. I'm sorry I didn't see it. So I just wanted to ask people to submit comments so that we have them on record.
Thank you. Anyone else? Susan Murray?
No, I just, I know we can't really talk about personnel issues in public, but I just wanted to thank everybody who spoke about their personal stories. It's very, always very moving to hear people who care deeply about their work talking about it. And I know we'll find other appropriate places for the board to consider the issues that have been raised. And I just wanted to put out there that maybe at some point, maybe next month, we could have a little working conversation about the board etiquette, about what to do when one person replies to the whole board, because I bet everybody thought somebody else was going to respond to Jim or thought the question was sort of above our pay grade and someone else would answer it, but that's a, that does seem like a fixable thing.
Who else? Commissioner Kirk? All right, seeing none, I'll close down the public comment and open up the board report at this time, starting off with the student report. Helen? Bella?
Yeah, so, for school sports, this fall season starts in next week, football starts on Monday, and all other sports start on Wednesday. Students are getting ready to head back to school, we have three weeks left this summer, so, hold on to that. Sixth, seventh, and ninth graders start on the 21st, July 30th, and everyone else will be back on the meeting on the 31st.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Bella? Moving on next to the Burlington City Council Liaison Report, Commissioner Curry?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you.
Committee will likely be reconvened after we hear back about the healthcare impact on the budget, so that's all.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Curry? State Legislative Liaison Report, Commissioner Barlow?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Barlow? Thank you. Commissioner Judson is not here today, so the PTO report will wait. The Policy Governance Report, Commissioner Harrington?
Well, things have been a little slow, I've been out of town for most of the whole time since the last time anybody saw me at a meeting, but I've been starting to work with Brittany on some language for the website, and in September, we should have a draft monitoring calendar to bring to the board for discussion and approval, or discussion and potential approval.
Any questions for Policy Governance? Thank you, Commissioner Beresby, Diversity and Equity?
At our meeting last week, we discussed the idea of presenting a number of community forums to give particular groups in the community, particular interest groups, an opportunity to talk to the board and tell us their concerns, and what's working for them and what's not working for them, and for us to answer questions. We decided to begin with, the first forum would be, hopefully sometime in the end of October, and it would be concerning New Americans, or inviting new Americans and all our New American community to come and engage with us. And then the second meeting would be maybe in February, and would be people with an interest in special education. And so we formed committees, and we're beginning to meet and research and try to plan that. We also talked about the, our great desire, and our superintendent responded by telling us it's in the works and going to happen, to have consistent data from all the schools in the same format, and in a more detailed format than we have now, about discipline data and suspension data, and it sounds like that's going to be happening next year. So it's coming. And we have somebody else from the committee who has something to say. Go, Stephanie.
So, with regard to the issue about the community forums, this has been part of policy governance, which is the board engaging more systematically with the community, and as Superintendent Obank said, there are several kinds of community forums you have to inform, consult, and engage. Thank you, I can't get that right. And so both of the ones that we've identified in the Diversity and Equity Committee in October and February are to engage, and Commissioner Wick, I wanted to just note that Commissioner Wick had, has made a proposal for a board-wide community forum, so that would make three community forums this year, and his proposal, his suggestion was for us to meet in particular with the youth agencies around town, the Y, the Boys and Girls Club, Sarah Holbrook, and the King Street Youth Center. And so that would happen at the board level, and I think it would then be a question as to, how does that get organized? Is there, you know, is there a motion on that, does it go to policy governance and so forth, but I wanted to at least put Commissioner Wick's idea out there.
Any discussion?
I wanted to just add that in the discussion of engaging with New American community, one of the things we talked about is it might not necessarily take the form of a meeting on some date where we invite people, that, the part of the thing the community might think about is, are there different ways to structure the engagement, so that we make sure it's productive and, and we get partic, you know, that we get good participation, so that was, I understood that was one piece of how.
Right, I think we were planning to do a meeting and also keep working on the home visits and home engagement, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Curry?
So is there an overall plan in place, that you guys are mapping out, or roadmap, or, you know, how the year will look in regards to these meetings and different strategies?
As far as February.
Yeah, I mean, is there a point in time where you'll include the full board in understanding the plan, or like you mentioned, home visits, you mentioned youth agencies, you mentioned different communities, so I'm just curious about how it'll all be structured.
Yeah, I think a piece of that conversation can happen when we look at the calendar in September. And on the specifics of the DNE, I think the plan was, there were people on the committee who were interested in working on the two forums that DNE had proposed, having, and that, but that, an invitation would go out to anybody else on the board who was interested in joining in the work on preparing those forums to do so, and that the calendar conversation would kind of lay out both the monitoring reports and actually the community engagement piece.
And, and we're, we already have begun, but it's very, it's in its infancy, so, you know, we have got a little more fleshed out before we send out, but Kathy and I met with Insigne and Meg from Parents and Youth for Change, I've contacted Miriam, Edisham Kating, and so we're working on trying to put all the brains together and connect with the liaisons and have a meeting about, is this a good idea, and how do we do it, and what will work, and we'll let everybody know soon. Soon as we have some idea what's going on.
Any else? Anyone else? Thank you.
So, the question still remains as to the third community forum, is the full board going to make that decision? Can we make a motion now? Are you recommending that we handle it otherwise?
I would rather the DNE committee take it, and you mentioned four organizations, but nobody mentioned the Y, which was Kyle.
I did.
Well, we have another one, too, we have multicultural youth programs, that needs to be there.
Yeah, so we have, I'd like, I'd like it just to be vetted through on the DNE to where, to make sure they capture, there might even be some state organizations that want to be involved in that, so we can sit down with that, so I would just ask that if the DNE can bring it back in September. Actually, we don't even need that, we just, you can just go ahead and schedule it, to tell you the truth, but just let the DNE just vet it out as to what organizations participate in that, on that third forum.
I thought DNE didn't want to. Well, we.
He's handing it back to us.
He's handing, okay, got it, got it.
How's that, how's that working out for you?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we're against it, it's okay.
Yeah, just come back in September and just brief the board on who, what the makeup of that last one's gonna be, and an idea of when, because by then you would have had the calendar built, so that'd be perfect, that'd be perfect. Alright, I will close out the board report and move on to hand it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report. Superintendent Obank?
Thank you, Chair Porter, and we're going to start with, Eric, come on up. We, Eric. Yep, access?
Yeah, Brittany's got it.
Okay, Brittany's got it, great. So one, the two components, I think it was the last board meeting, when we first started, around some of the pre-work and the vendor that we hired to start with our website and our logo piece, so Eric's gonna give you an update where we are. We're still on track to have an opening for beginning of school. Right now, as most of you know, you know, it's a little bit awkward because we've got the sort of temporary site up there, and we've loaded on a number of materials, but sometimes you have to kind of go looking for it, but we're really looking forward to, sorry, there's so many aspects of our communication strategy that's incorporated into our website, so I thought chunking it might help, and so Eric is gonna give us a little bit of, in terms of, at the school level as well, too, today, so you can see where we're at.
Alright, thanks, Ja.
Go for it.
So, I'm Eric Wells, Communication Specialist for the Burlington School District, for folks watching at home in the public. So I'm very excited to update the board again tonight on the status of our website project, and provide a first look at the work we've been, we've been doing these past few months. Just want to stress, our partner in this Stride Creative Group, a local firm based in Burlington, has been great to work with, to enact this vision and this work and all these ideas that Brittany and I have thrown at them these last couple of months, and been able to take on this project very well. So our plan right now, we're getting ready to launch these sites, likely the week of August 21st. Feel that's important right before the start of school, to have this back in place and restore order, instead of kind of this one temporary page that we've had over the last couple of months during this transition. So what we'll be looking at is similar to the setup we had before, we'll have a new site for the school district, and a new site for each school, and we'll also be having a separate site for early education, as that's growing, expanding, have its own presence in the city. So I guess the exciting parts will show, and I can, suppose me just telling here. So I'll show you for, for one, we're working on these sites the last week and really push the next couple of weeks to really input the content, we've got the backend stuff set up, but this is the fun part to, to get it all together. So here's an idea with the Sustainability Academy, a general look at our setup that we've come up with for the website here. So I'll just reiterate some, some key objectives that we had from the start. Ease of use of the site, a more robust means of information sharing and calendar access. We've set up the calendars on the website to be directly tied to Google Calendars at all the schools for ease of updates and use. The old website had a process for so many to log into it at each event one at a time, but incorporating Google Calendar, it's a tool that staff is familiar with, and ease of updating is much easier than what we had before. Another thing to highlight here, really showcase our schools, the learning taking place in the student stories. Remember from the old site, on the homepage, we had this kind of endless scroll it would turn into, where we'd post announcements and information, and we've transitioned it as WordPress platform to look at a post concept with categories, some, looking at updates or reminders, what's happening at the school, or expanded features on student stories and student learning. And a huge component of this, too, is also the presence of photos and having an active update of visually what's going on in all of our schools. And I think most of you know Fritz, our photographer, is here tonight, taking some photos as well. So we're really building, I just see the dynamic banners on this page, at the top, we have, it's easy to update these, we can do this throughout the year. And we can add a number of ways to showcase our learning, and have it more visual than we were before, really get that out to the community. So we've also built into our navigation design features, information that we gathered earlier this year. We had a parent survey, I met with some PTO groups, some last spring at their meetings, really here, what are those, I asked, I posed the question, what are information on the website right now that you need and you can't find easily? So you'll see that reflected in, especially this utility navigation at the top, where you see the symbols, calendar, the lunch menus, bus information, attendance line, that's where those came from, those quick areas to find on each school consistently. Other feedback we worked on as we developed the site, we had opportunity for principals to weigh in last spring, and board prior members of survey we sent out to get input on the board's section of presence on the website. So as we, as we look at this as well, we're really thinking about clean, crisp, less is more look, and it's also mobile friendly, and will adapt and shrink to whatever size mobile device you're using, a tablet or a phone. And another critical piece we looked at was ADA accessibility features, using our national standards, and our developers built those into the site here. They provided me with some information to kind of get into more detail, so I'll hit on some of the main macro areas here tonight. So when you look at that, kind of four main areas covered, making sure things are perceivable, can't be invisible to the senses, an example of that is text alternatives for non-text content like photos. So there's, each photo we put on the site, we provide a description, so that's an alternative that will pop up on the site. I'll make sure the site's operable, making sure all users, all users can operate the interface of it, for example, making functionality available only on the keyboard. Making sure it's understandable, the information and the interface, for example, making the text readable and understandable. And also, keeping in mind, make it robust, make sure content is accessible as technology continues to evolve, as we see, year to year, and sometimes month to month, in the age we are here. So we think about, I kind of think in a couple spears here, when I was looking at what we had before and where we're moving forward. Really, our look at dynamic content, those pieces of school news, what's going on, the calendar, information you want to get up there and update frequently, and design effective systems to do that. Then we have some more static information on our site, information about our school, kind of general forums, people are looking for, some area for frequently asked questions, a presence for the principals to have a page and space, department information, linking out to PTO. These are pieces that, more static, will develop and refine over time, especially as we're getting off the ground here, there's a validity to that piece of the site. So we're looking at those, at dichotomy, there's a dynamic and a static moving forward. And we also, when we looked at this, we looked at a needs-based versus historical context. Probably familiar with the old site, there were a lot of things there that had been there for years, as life of websites happened, things kind of compound and build on each other. We did an audit of that, looked and thought in the lens of, what do we really need moving forward for the district? Try to step back a little bit there, we can always add things back in as we go, but trying to take that information that's out there and condense it down if we could. And another piece, you'll notice, the older site, we had a lot of presence for internal information, documents for staff, work requests, various things that were handled internally. So we've transitioned that to a Google site, an internal staff portal, we're calling it, and we'll provide a link on there for our staff members to access. So that helped remove some information that we didn't want as much public outward facing externally for our face here. And we also really want to showcase our district for people thinking of moving to the city, and also thinking of working here, that'll be a major component of the site, we'll have a page on the district level careers, we'll talk about Burlington, talk about the district, all the things we stand for here, and really look for people as a marketing component to come and want to work here for us, and share that more broadly on our site. As I said, this is still a fluid process, there's a lot of pieces moving these next couple of weeks, but we've got the infrastructure in place, so I'm confident we'll have things up and running well for the start of school. Have a good team here that we've assembled, Brittany's been working on this closely with me throughout, our creative team, and also our IT department at the high school where we're hosting this, have been great partners in this. You know, it's probably best, maybe best to take a tour of the site, I can send links to the board directly, I don't want to take too much of your time this evening, certainly able to answer questions you have right now, or showcase something, but this site's pretty far along, but things are still a work in progress as we work to refine things, so, thank you for your time, and open any questions you have.
We're gonna talk about the logo as well, so we could always take questions at the end, or if you want to do the website specific ones now.
I have a website specific question. I just want to know, will we still have a way to reach archived stuff?
Yep, in terms of board minutes, or just older things?
Yeah, or, yeah, board minutes, or old budgets, or whatever, old stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
There, and there'll be some way to get to it.
Yeah, on the district level.
Okay, good.
Mark?
I know I asked this once before, but I'll ask it again. On Board Docs, Board Docs is also not mobile friendly, and I know you had mentioned maybe there was, there were some options around making that mobile friendly as well?
I can touch on that.
So that those of us that are trying to read things or find things on our phones?
Yeah, I can, I can touch on that. Board Docs is getting a facelift very soon, and they did inform me that it will be mobile friendly, so that's really exciting. Some of the thing, another thing that I realized on Board Docs is that I put in a share link, so on the onboard docs in each, it's kind of hard to show right now, but in each specific meeting, you can share here, and you can share on Facebook or Twitter, or email the link, which is a nice way, so we can get it right on Facebook, so thinking about more accessibility there. But they have let me know that that's their plan, and I'm not sure that upgrading to Board Docs Pro at this time will be the best move in terms of accessibility, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that we could do with Board Docs in general that I'm happy to explore further, if the board would like.
Do you know specifically if they'll have a responsive design?
I don't know too much about the design, but I can inquire about that and see a bit more. As far as I know, it's Board Docs as a whole is getting an upgrade, so that would mean the city council and other, their groups that use it, so I can get back to you on that.
I really appreciate the robust process you've used to create what looks like a really beautiful website, and just from my parent's point of view, it already looks way better than the way the old website kind of grew over time. Are you doing any usability testing with this version of it? To see how people respond to it?
Yeah, that'll be one of, one of the pieces I'm gonna talk to the developer about. Yeah, that'll be one of, one of the pieces I'm going to talk to the developer about. And then also as, as we launch, getting feedback from folks will be really important, hearing what, what's working well and if there's some areas where we can improve, we'd love to get that feedback.
One of the things that, that we're looking at because we have those type of questions is to have a soft opening. Where we're going to get a lot of feedback and then still have the flexibility to say, okay, this is what's going to work for us. Because there's so many, so many parameters and so many opportunities. If we had time, we'd go through the different sections, but we don't, but you'll get a chance to see the final piece when it's, this is not up yet. This is the only person has access right now is, is Brittany and Eric, but do you want to move on to the website piece?
To the logo?
To the logo, sorry.
So I'm going to touch base on our logo. I'm going, I kind of just, I'm putting it up here so you can follow along as I describe what we've put together for you. Given our work on building the new website, we saw this time as a perfect opportunity to rebrand ourselves and design a new logo. We've had many iterations of a logo that both Eric and I have found since we started at the school district. So we, we felt like it was a perfect opportunity to give a fresh look. And having an up-to-date logo is essential in the design process for the website as well. So you'll see when you look at the district site, all the design work is based off of this logo, which makes it very, very aesthetically pleasing. And again, Stride has been an incredible partner here. They have a great portfolio. And they've worked with us for many years on our calendar and handbook as well as through the Burlington School Food Project. So we really feel like they have a great understanding of our vision and the image that we want to express to the world. Some of the main elements that I'll just describe right now for you that you can kind of follow along, if I had like a pointer, I would sort of show you. But one of the, the, our main goals was that we wanted something that would stand out, something that was recognizable. So when folks saw the image without the words, they would know what it meant. And we felt that this symbol is clearly an image of Burlington, Vermont. The geographical connection here was important and allowed us to achieve other goals, which I'll talk about in a moment. So we wanted to show a message of hope and inspiration.
It's a laser.
That's okay. I was half joking. I don't think, I've never tried this, so thank you Marty. So we wanted to show a message of hope and inspiration, which we feel like comes across here, a place with endless possibilities, with a sun rising or setting, however you look at it. We did this through our use of color. It's hard to tell on this screen, but the colors are a little more vibrant. Certainly any device that you're looking at will be slightly different. And we wanted to show through the use of color, you can see the layers there. We wanted to express our celebration of diversity as a school district, having different shapes and sizes of, of those colors, we felt was important. We also thought that it conveyed our vision statement, creating or cultivating caring, creative and courageous people, join the journey. And we thought that this image really showed that movement and fluidity toward a broader, a better future and toward a successful future as a school district. And inviting everyone to join the journey. So this complexity was important and for us to express, but we also wanted there to be a message of simplicity as well, which you'll see in the font. We didn't want to go too crazy and have it look distracting and we wanted there to be a sense of clarity as well. So those are kind of the main points and we're really presenting to you tonight what we see as the final image, but we wanted to see if there were any questions.
Brittany, so the font with the vision statement.
Oh yeah. So I'll just, I'm going to preface as I do this that this was the final proof. And there's a couple of pieces on here that the Stride recommended we didn't use. So for example, down here, this would be an example of something that's a little bit too catchy as it, by itself, or a little too confusing by itself. So we wouldn't do that on its own. But you'll see what Yau's referring to is an example of like a mug and a tee shirt and business cards that shows the, our vision statement in conjunction with the logo, which we feel like are very complimentary and nice. And we can use both in a variety of different ways that makes sense, like on letterhead or whatnot.
Thanks. I really appreciate the explanation of how much thought and all the goals that went in to the, to the logo. And you know, I like the way the sun attracts your eye and that, you know, implication there. I'm just probably going to take the privilege as a board member of registering my reaction around this not including any people. And that this, you know, I, when we say courageous people, like you can cultivate and care for trees, but when you say courageous people, it would be nice if those trees were silhouettes of people so that we get the connection that we're actually educating kids and have that be a part of our image. So, sorry, I don't mean to be critical. I just felt pretty strongly that this could be like our Parks and Rec Department logo. So I appreciate your willingness to accept that feedback and you don't need to reply.
Well, we did consider that piece. That was a topic of conversation. And we were trying to weigh, every school district that we looked at often had like a kind of abstract pictures of people. And we were trying to figure out how, a way for us to be unique. But thank you for the, the feedback. That was definitely noted throughout our process.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks Eric.
Okay. Onto the next item. And I'm going to invite Marty and Nate. Or no, sorry. Wellness, wellness policy. Yeah, you want to pull that up?
So hi, I'm Barry Grusner. I'm the grants director. And I'm kind of sitting in for Doug Davis, the food services director who's out of town tonight. But Doug and I have both worked quite a bit on wellness issues in the district through our coordinated school health team. And we just wanted to present Doug's recommendation to approve a, the adoption of a new wellness policy. There's a, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act resulted in some new regulations that were finalized about a year ago. And so part of the new regulations is that we all need, all, all school districts who are in USDA food programs need to have a wellness policy that complies with various aspects of the, of the regulation. The Vermont School Boards Association, as it does in other areas, created a model policy that it believes meets the requirements and also fits the view of policy governance. So it seemed like a, a good opportunity to also to revise our policy and, and bring it into accord with policy governance. The, the only caveat that, that Doug mentions in his recommendation is that we do have an, this team, this coordinated school health team, and we have a lot of very engaged staff and students and parents and people in the community who really care about wellness. And this new wellness policy, while it does meet all of our legal requirements, it does, it definitely is a narrowing of the focus of our current wellness policy, which I think in some ways is good. But as Doug says in his, in his memo, it would be great to continue our broader wellness activities under the auspices of the, of this coordinated school health team, in addition to the work that we're doing as part of this policy, this wellness policy.
Questions?
So this is quite lengthy, it's three pages for policy governance. We don't usually have, this is the old way we did business with policies of this length, so.
So this would follow the current mandated policies from the state or federal government?
I was going to find out, I was going to get to the point of how does it fit into our, we definitely have the Uber, Uber P and G person over here that might be able to help me. How would this fit into our documentation?
Policy governance is actually irrelevant here.
Okay. This is a school policy, this is a district policy.
It's a mandated policy.
If the federal government or the state government requires us to have a policy, we have to have a policy. And on the agenda, there's the very helpful explanation from the agriculture department about what the policy is supposed to include. So if they say we have to include stuff that takes seven pages to explain, it's, that's.
So is this a district policy?
It's a district policy.
Yes, it's a district policy required by the federal government.
Okay.
Indeed, the challenge is that many of the district policies, well, policies are sort of sanctioned by boards, they, they, usually they ask for boards.
No, I'm good now.
Just, just kind of a reminder for boards, you'll, once our website's up, you'll see it a lot cleaner. Where we'll have our policy, governance policies, then we'll have our state and federal mandated policies. So things that come down and they say, you must have a policy on this, which, and we'll have those and before we even have our own district procedures. So this would fall under the category of a mandated policy that we need to let the board know that we're being mandated to follow this policy. And then you support it and then we, we'd be in compliance and put it up on our.
Thank you. I was curious about your comment that, and, and the memo as well, that the focus has been broader than this particular VSBA endorsed policy. And I wonder if you could describe kind of the greater breadth of focus on wealth, wellness?
Yeah. Our current policy is quite comprehensive and in fact, it was developed and basically touted as a, as an exemplar comprehensive wellness policy when it was first implemented and created about six or eight years ago. And, but that's, that's basically, it, it covers health and education areas a lot more. There's a little bit more on mental health and staff health and wellness. And there's areas that, that aren't required under the law to have in the policy. So I think the thinking was that going along with the spirit of policy governance is that you don't want to have anything in there that you don't necessarily have to have in terms of staying in compliance. But you're also free to, through other avenues, to continue to work with those other broader wellness issues.
Can I just follow up briefly?
It's a commission, I'll just.
Can I follow up on a question?
Okay.
And so what has happened then to kind of that broader focus? Does that mean we've lost it now with this policy?
No, we haven't lost it because they do fit under many other aspects. And one of the things that we're working on now is operational procedures and trying to be clear about the language so we don't get it mixed up between policy, right? So the board is setting policies and we do, which are essential, policies for the district, but they're called procedures. So some of those components around, around those pieces would fall into other areas. And we had a good conversation with Doug who works with this policy as well too, in terms of what do we do with this, right? In terms of, these are some good things that we were doing outside of what the legislation says. Okay, let's keep it clean and we'll make sure we incorporate those practices and procedures under our own operational procedures so we can continue to have that exemplary standard.
I guess I don't understand, if we have a broader one that's better than this and incorporates all this that is in this federal policy, am I correct?
No.
Oh, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of the, for the new regulations, no.
Oh, okay.
But it does cover a broader range of topics, but it doesn't include everything it needs to include to be in compliance.
And, and why can't we meld those two together and have one that takes in both of them? That which we have had that was broader and the new policies that are federally mandated.
Right. The thinking was that, that to bring it to the, what will bring us into compliance. And again, under the, under the idea of policy governance where you, you want to put only the very necessary pieces of your policies into, into, into actual policies themselves. And then you have an opportunity, as, as Yau was saying, to, to develop procedures or other ways of, of addressing the other aspects that might have been in the, in the old policy.
Well, good, but we as a board don't then have, I mean, we can't look at whether those things are being followed that are broader than what this is if they're not in a policy.
Yeah, well, let me try to simplify because one of the things we, we need to bring to the board is levels of compliance that we must adhere to. And this is a piece that we have to do. The other, the, the previous policy had a lot of other things which were great, but they weren't mandates that we had. So we wanted to make sure we covered the mandated pieces. Essentially the same question that Stephanie had, what happens to all those other things? And so I've said, we're not losing those other things. We just have to park them in other procedures so that we can still follow through. But in terms of mandated policies, we wanted that to be as clean and meet the, all the pieces that the, the state is asking for.
So if it's helpful, I think it goes back to that learning to, about the pedagogy, pedagogy of policy governance and thinking about the policies representing just the limitations that we've delegated. And so when it gets into operational implementation, that speaks to.
But I don't think that is operational limitations. That's just that they wanted to only have that which the feds are putting out instead of mandating what we've already been doing.
Well, so, but what, the difference now with policy governments is that we're attempting to separate. What we've already been doing is our administrative operational decisions that administrators make versus, yeah, that's what they are. I mean, if you read the existing policy, you're going to see all kinds of decisions there. You know, we could have a superintendent who chose not to do any of that, who chose to disband the team. That's not required. So the goal with policy governance is to say, we are delegating to the superintendent operational decisions like that and then we will evaluate that, those decisions. But we can't delegate federal requirements because we are bound by those under law. So we can't just say, don't bother us with all your federal requirements. We have to know what they are and we have to oversee them. But when it comes to non-required things, that's the goal of policy governance is to make that distinction. So it just, you know, and thinking about it as a board member, I don't know how else to articulate it, but it goes back to that. You know, those trainings we had about looking at these as the limits of authority essentially, but not then overreaching into like, and here's all the things we want you to do, like have this team and do these policies and include this, that and the other thing. Even though we might want that, that's more of a discussion under evaluation and how the district is performing.
Is there any cost to this?
No.
Are there any unplanned costs that we didn't know about? All right, thank you.
So when was this policy warned? On what date?
I think when the.
Because we do have to follow state.
Yeah, I guess it would be technically it was warned on Friday.
So we do have to follow state law that we need 10 days for warning a policy for adoption, so this would have to go to September.
That's, that's the state law you sent?
Yeah, I can forward you the email that went to folks, a couple of folks in June.
Okay, thank you.
Are we time constrained on this in any way? Are we in violation with any rules?
I think we can wait, we can wait.
September I think should be fine as long as we're, if anybody asks us about it, we can show that we're making good progress. It was technically supposed to be done by July 1st, but.
This is just purely a warning period.
Yeah, it's on our, it's on our agenda, so.
So let's put it to September for the approval of the motion. Is everybody okay with that?
Can I ask how the warning, if we warn 48 hours before a meeting, how?
I don't, this is, this is the problem is how do you warn just a motion?
So the reason, so under the old approach that we had with committees, the, the reason why the policy committee had to have one reading and two readings was to comply with state law. So without committees to have one reading and two readings.
So how do we do it now when we only have to do a 48 hour warning for the agenda for a board meeting? How do we warn it?
Any, any policy has to have at least 10 days.
So we could post it on our website.
Put it on August, it'll be on the next board meeting or put it on the website.
So don't use the agenda for the board meeting to do that. Put it, use the website to do that.
I mean, I would just recommend becoming familiar with state law for warnings. There's a number of different tenants that you need to follow. And that involves sending notice to the clerk. I mean, you know what warnings involve. So it would mean doing all that at least 10 days prior to adoption.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on the expectation from, from the board on how they, how you would receive that warning if it, through that process.
Whatever, you know what, why don't, why don't you guys sit down and figure out the best way to get it to us instead of us telling you how best way? Because you've got the website now, you've got all these tools. So rather than us try to mess with what you guys have just been working on, even though Eric didn't really do much on it, but.
Thank you.
That'd probably be the best way to do it.
All right.
Can we say that, Eric?
I'll send people a link to the former wellness policy, which has a lot of super interesting stuff in it. And I don't know that I ever realized this stuff was in it because in the previous governance system, there was little incentive to read all of the policies.
Because there was so much.
Because there was so much stuff there. There's a lot of cool stuff in there, some of which I imagine is actually thoroughly enmeshed in the procedures of the Food Services Unit itself, like a commitment to local produce in the, you know. There's stuff about ensuring that students have access to mental health resources, which is probably enmeshed someplace else. I mean, so I think, and, well, but there's an, I, I think there's an advantage to.
Sure.
Clarifying where things are. I mean, it's like, like your notion of where, where are these things parked? And how are they getting addressed? There's some other aspects of this policy that would, are covered under the restorative justice.
Yeah, there's a lot of pieces. I mean, you'll see, once Eric didn't go into this, in our new website, when it comes up, we're actually going to have sites for the different departments. We're going to have a lot more resource information as opposed to just who to contact. And I know that Food Services actually has a whole site already. They have a site of practice already that has all this information and more on there. So we'll be able to publicize that a little bit better in terms of where people can get other information in our practices.
We need to close this conversation.
Yep.
Okay, you want to move on to your next one?
Yep.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk this evening about awarding our transportation bids for the 2000 FY18 school year. So let me provide a little detail in history. So if you're not aware, the bulk of our students ride public transportation, which is Green Mountain Transit, formerly known as CCTA. So a few years ago, when the school district restructured its schedule to allow for professional development on Wednesdays, they adopted an early release. CCTA was not able to provide those neighborhood specials that they do at the end of the day for our, our students in our sending schools. So the school district started contracting out services to a company called Mountain Transit. Not to confuse what CCTA's name is now, Green Mountain Transit. So we've been contracting out that Wednesday early release schedule for a number of years now with Mountain Transit. In addition, a year after they contracted out the Wednesday early release schedule, they also, when restructuring the magnet schools and creating school choice, there was a need to provide additional transportation from basically the, the south end to additional schools in the district that the neighborhood specials didn't serve. So we created this south to north end route. We also contracted with Mountain Transit for those services. For the past few years, we have, we've chosen not to go back out to bid for those services. We, Mountain Transit has actually increased the, our contract by the Consumer Price Index, which is, you know, allowable by our bid laws. This current year, we chose to go back out to bid. We sent that bid out to, oh, one, two, three, six different companies. Mountain Transit was the only company that provided a bid for those services. So they provided a bid for the north-south daily route at $56,875 and for the Wednesday early release at $52,500. That totals roughly $109,375. Our last year's contract, we paid roughly 105. We budgeted.
Yeah, I can.
We budgeted 108, so this is within our budget.
Way down.
Right there.
Up here.
Right there, yep. We also contracted with them to provide our athletic and field trips as well. And they gave us a rate per hour to perform those services. So simultaneously, we've been having conversations with GMT, Green Mountain Transit, formerly known as CCTA, to determine if they're capable of performing the services of, of transporting our students on, for either one of these, these services that we're currently contracting out. They're currently not able to provide those services for the daily north-south run just because they don't have the number of buses and staff to be able to do that now. But they have indicated that they're able to provide the, possibly able to provide those services for the Wednesday early release. But they cannot build the school district directly. This would be a service because they are a public transportation provider, that, that the cost would have to be absorbed by the city. We are in conversation with the city about the possibility of having them take over that cost. However, we have not, we have not finalized that conversation. But, but because we do, we are approaching the start of the school year and we need to award the bid to Green Mountain, or sorry, Mountain Transit, we want to take the opportunity tonight to award the bid for the north-south route for the proposed $56,875. We're also looking for a motion to, to authorize administration to be able to award the bid for the Wednesday early release for the amount of $52,500 in the event that we are not able to have GMT provide that service.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Commissioner Barlow.
On the, in the lower table, on the, on the row Wednesday early release.
Yes.
On the second column, GMT district estimate cost 60 cents a ride.
Right.
Is that 64.80 number? And what, how is that different? I mean, other than obviously the size of the number, then this GMT additional cost to the city, shouldn't they be the same as 64?
The 60 cents a ride is paid by the district. That's the amount that the district actually pays. And the additional cost, that's the assessment that CCTA makes to member communities. And they make that assessment on the basis of a number of factors. And this, if we were able to use Green Mountain Transit for this run, the assessment to the city would increase by the 36,000. So the, the attractiveness of that option is that it is both cheaper in total cost to the community, if you think of it in those terms, and it's significantly cheaper to the school district, 6,000 as opposed to 52,000. Obviously, there's a cost to the city. Folks might remember that the prohibition on the school district paying that assessed cost came, you know, came down from the Agency of Education at approximately the same time they prohibited the school district from receiving private, so from receiving pilot money. So while we lost on the order of 1.4 to 1.7 million dollars of pilot revenue, one of the costs that we no longer incurred was approximately $150,000 worth of CCTA at the time assessed cost. So while that wasn't exactly an even trade, there was some advantage. So if the city agrees to this additional assessed cost of about $36,000, it would obviously be a substantial advantage to the district in terms of generating savings.
And would that savings be 52,500?
No, the savings would be the difference between essentially the, yeah, we would, we would spend 6,840 instead of 52,500, so whatever, 45 and change.
And I'll just point out, the 6,480 is just an estimate based on ridership. We actually pay per click, and that's what we estimate.
So before, Wednesdays were not actually paid for by the city when they did use the pilot funds for this?
No, no, the, the, since, since, my understanding is, since the early release was necessary, we have been contracting with Mountain Transit, the private bus company. What we sought in this round was to reduce cost to the district by approaching Green Mountain Transit, the public company, and saying, would you now be interested in doing this run? We had to give them some time to think about it, work on their schedule. They said they could potentially do it, and this is kind of how the costs would play out if we kind of can seal the deal with the city on, on doing this.
How long have we had the early release?
I don't know.
At least four years.
Yeah, I'm guessing five, but I.
Marty, if we had to take the full burden, Green Mountain Transit's cost, there'd still be a significant savings over Mountain Transit. I mean, is that still playable? Or if we award a contract, we lose it, what's the deal?
We cannot pay that cost.
We're not, we're prohibited from paying that, so that's not an option for us.
So we're prohibited from paying.
That, that assessed cost, we can't pay.
I'll just interrupt, I'm sorry. I worked at CCTA and managed federal compliance, so I can just explain that federal dollars cannot be spent providing bus service to schools. And the reason for that is the private bus lobbyists made sure that bus service could not be subsidized. So the way CCTA charges its municipal members is through a formula based on hours on the road and other factors that go into that formula. And then, as Nathan indicated, each municipality pays that assessment based on hours on the road and these other factors around routes and schedules and drivers. And so the city, and also, we should say that these bus routes, like if you wanted to get on the bus, you would, they would have to let you on the bus. They have to let any member of public on the bus, even if there's 100 kids on the bus, because it's a public route being paid with, by municipal dollars. It's not a designated school bus. So that's just an aside. But we can never pay for school bus service. And what was happening before was there was kind of a handshake that the AOE discovered in, in order to be in compliance. The school district was no longer permitted to reimburse the city for any school bus service provided through CCTA.
Go ahead, I still have another question.
You're good.
But go ahead, I got one more, but.
Well, go ahead.
So my other, the follow-up would be, would we, the district, be able to provide bus service for $57,000 a year?
So it's something we could look into.
We, we have.
This time, yeah.
It's millions of dollars.
I would say, you know.
We did actually, both in the prior administration, when the AOE issue came up, there was a estimate, and it's, it's like a million dollars.
The cost of buses alone.
Right.
Yeah, we have an incredible.
Sorry, was that the question? I mean, if, if we can't.
Well, the question is, I'm just looking at the north-south district route. I'm not looking at providing bus service for, for the complete district. I mean, we already currently own five school buses. And we currently supply service for special needs kids and, and pre-K programs and stuff like that. So I understand that we own buses already, we do do this. And I don't know if this north-south route is one bus, two buses, five buses, I don't know. But over 10 years of paying $56,000, we've invested a half a million dollars into the system, which maybe it's still prohib, cost prohibitive. I don't know, that's my question.
What I can tell you is, we haven't looked into it recently. Maybe you looked into it in the past, we can certainly look into it again. We definitely cannot look into it for the start of this school year.
I understand.
I mean, isn't that like the salary of a bus driver or something?
My gut tells me that, that no, we cannot do it cheaper.
Yeah.
But, but certainly worth looking at, but.
Regarding your motion up there, I have no problem with number one, which is for the $56,875, okay? Awarding number two is slightly in conflict with the recommendation, which is you're, you want us to authorize the award to Mountain Transit for the 52,500. In the event.
Right.
The recommendation comes back negative.
From the city.
Right?
However, I'm saying. In the event that we can't reach agreement with the city, which is not a bid or an award. In that case, that's different, just technically speaking. So you're not awarding anything to the city, that's not, just the language is clear. If we can't reach agreement with the city to pick up what would be their share of that cost for expanding public bus service, we want to then be able to award the bid to Mountain Transit to do that route. If the city agrees, we don't need to award anyone. We'll say, sorry, Mountain Transit, we've decided not to make an award because we've made an arrangement for these students to get transported.
However, we.
Yeah, I really don't like the way that's worded, just because it's, there's the expectation, because it's the if, because there's an if statement there that says it'll go to Mountain Transit. And the if's presumptive that the city will do it. So we're asking them to increase their budget when, we're asking them to increase their budget without first having that agreed to. So I, I would feel better, I mean, I would feel. The sure thing is Mountain Transit right now. We know they'll do Wednesday early release for 52,500 within our budget. You're hoping to save the 9500 bucks, which is all the differences between Mountain Transit and Green Mountain.
No.
No.
36,480.
42,960.
The 42,000 is the total. The total, the total cost for Mountain Transit, or sorry, for Green Mountain Transit, the public company, to provide the services, the 42,960. However, the cost to the district, if we can go that route, is only 6,840. There's substantial savings to the district. There is modest, although I would argue not inconsequential, savings to the community as a whole going that route, which is something that, you know, we have to actually discuss with the, the city. As to whether or not the city needs to increase their budget or not, I'm not sure that that is actually true. Obviously, they would have to make an adjustment potentially to it. But that's the conversation that we would have with them, and we would encourage them, for example, to access the pilot revenues that they've been receiving on an annual basis since the district stopped receiving those funds. This is obviously a relatively small fraction of that, but we know that that money has continued to accrue to the city. And so that's one of the obvious places that they could look to make that adjustment if they choose to do so.
And we need that flexibility too, because it is time sensitive, right?
Correct.
Because school's about to start, so.
Clearly couldn't award only a piece of this, and then if the city backed out, we would have to come back to the, the board for the other motion. And we would either have to, either have a special board meeting or, or if we clearly waited until September, it would be past school, when school starts.
This is just, this is just really bad timing, right? So this, this something or some way or another, the conversation could have been had with the city rather than telling them, hey, guess what? Right, or the board saying, we don't care what your budget is, you're going to have to go find another 36,480 because, which they could easily say no to, right? And that's where your number two comes into play. But still, we're playing a hand there that's, I, I don't like it, I think it could have been better prepared.
The conversations have started, we just haven't got the.
I think they could have been done. I'm sorry, let me go this way, Commissioner Barlow.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with the second part of the motion, but I am curious about what the, what is the process and the calendar that you have with the city to resolve this? Is, is it, do you expect to have it resolved before school starts?
We will have to get a definite answer before school starts in order to make that final decision on whether or not we would, we would contract with Mountain Transit.
And are there meetings scheduled with the city or?
We don't have a follow-up meeting scheduled, they're, they're aware of this. So, you know, it does, we don't, we're not quite sure if that, that conversation just happens with, with the CEO and, or if it needs to go to city council.
Commissioner Seguino.
Commissioner Curry was.
Yeah, I just want to express my comfort with this motion. Perhaps that's just because I have an inside view into how this works. The city's assessment is, is millions of dollars. This represents, you know, I think, a real opportunity just to do something together as we're trying to do cooperatively with the city. And I think if this were a burden on the city, we would have heard about it by now, and I think that would have been conveyed to us. This conversation happens every year. The school district hands the CCTA a list of kids and where they live, and they look at the route configuration and see if they can do it. They have a system where one route just bleeds into another, and they'll, they'll either be able to do it or they won't. And so I think the motion is written appropriately, so I support it. And I guess maybe just because of my history with the issue, I don't see us breaking away from past practice or doing anything kind of unusual or upsetting any apple carts.
Commissioner Seguino.
So I just, I'm sorry, Marty, if you, I'll ask my question, then maybe you can answer both. So I just wanted to repeat back what I've heard and see if I've, you know, appropriately understood. From what I'm, understanding what you're saying, you've already had conversations with the city. city, and we are now simply taking the steps to formalize discussions that you've already had about this specific issue. Does that sound accurate? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not quite sure. Yeah, I don't think that's quite right.
We have, so, we could have done regular business, and then at some point said, oh, here's your bill for this year, and maybe somebody would have noticed, maybe somebody wouldn't have noticed, and they would have just paid it and moved on. What we did was, we reached out and said, hey, look, there's going to be some changes. You need to be aware that there could be an increased cost, right? And of course, the natural reaction is, oh, we need to kind of look at this and kind of examine it. And so in the meantime, we've been trying to find a way to have the conversation, but we wanted to bring it here to let the board know that we're exploring this avenue, and we've got the dual options here. If for some reason the city says we can't do it for whatever reason, we have a strategy to pivot to the other way. And we want that flexibility because school's going to start very soon, and we have to make a decision based on that. The cost to the city is $36,000, so I'd hope that they seriously consider it. They may come back with some valid reasons why they can't, but I mean, that'll be up to them to do a final no on it, and then we'll have to go to Plan B, and we'll make sure the kids get to, get to school.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Kirk.
Is there any chance that with the contract for Mountain Transit, that if we wait too long to give them an answer, it's going to change or disappear or dissolve?
So it is, part of the RFP required that they have to hold the bids for a certain time period. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. Clearly, we need, we went out to bid in May, so they'll need an answer shortly.
Mr. Harrington.
I applaud the persistence and creativity in trying to achieve some savings here, and like Commissioner Curry, I'm very comfortable with the second piece of the motion, because I don't see any downside to it. It's very clear what the potential financial obligation is of the fallback position. It's within our budget, so I can't see that that motion puts us into a corner. With my parent hat, I've been looking at the website for bus information as my kid transitions from walking to school to taking the bus to school. So I would also, you know, it's time sensitive, and I think this motion is a way to settle things so that families can understand, I mean, can, can make their plans. I did have a question. So the Wednesday early release serves the elementary and middle schools, so high school students who need to have, arrive late on Wednesdays are still not served by buses.
That is, CCTA is still not able to address that completely.
That seems unfortunate.
And that is very unfortunate.
Correct. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you can call a motion.
Do we have a motion maker?
Yes.
And a second.
He would, he just went through this thing now. He can call the motion now.
Well, we really made the motion. We should have had a.
He went through his presentation. He went through his presentation. So we have a motion.
Right, so I will move that we authorize the administration to request approval from the city to absorb additional cost of 36,480 for Green Mountain Transit to provide services to accommodate school districts Wednesday early release service, and to award daily south-north route and athletic and field trip services for his year 18 to STA, and to authorize the administration to award Mountain Transit the Wednesday early release routes in the event that Green Mountain Transit is not able to perform this service.
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Naye.
I didn't catch all of that, so Liz, if you don't mind, send me.
She's right there.
She mentioned the same thing twice, it's okay.
Okay, thank you. I was very impressed by yours.
Did you get the yeas and the nays?
My photographic memory.
Rainey, you got one nay, though, right?
Two.
Two nays.
Two nays.
Who's the other one?
King David.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next, next motion is to award a bid for a new commercial mower. Give you a little detail on this. So we applied for a grant with Vermont Environmental Conservation for a, it's called a Vermont Diesel Grant, to purchase a mower that was, that is more efficient and more fuel efficient. So we're, we're awarded that grant for $6,575. We went out to bid for a Ventrax mower, which met the specifications of the, the grant that we applied for. We received, we went out to bid for three different companies, we received two bids. Our recommendation is to award the bid to MTE Turf Equipment for the amount of $28,533 based on, on the overall cost. It is a higher cost than the lower bid that we received. However, the ability to receive services in Richmond, Vermont versus Greenwich, New York definitely outweigh the, the cost difference there.
So I'd like to make a motion based on all facts of the cost availability and service locations. Administration recommends that the BDS board award BSD commercial mower bid to MTE Turf Equipment Solutions for the amount of $28,533. Can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Barlow. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I finish you up, Superintendent?
That's it, thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harrington, all those in favor of the consent agenda as a motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Seguino.
I'd like to make a comment on the financial reports, and I'd particularly like to make a comment on the variance report. This is maybe the.
Name? Name?
Nathan, I was making a comment on the variance reports. This has to be the third or fourth month in which we've had no warning signals in the variance report. I mean, and I want to just comment that we have come a long ways in the last three years. And it, if, the evidence suggests to me that there's just much greater stability, much better ability to project costs and to budget, and these reports have now just simply become routine rather than every month having to question in detail why we see red, yellow, or green on this. So I just want to, I wanted to just point that out and really appreciate that, and to acknowledge that we have come a huge distance in three years, so thank you very much.
Thanks. I assume this was pulled from the consent agenda for the purposes of discussion, so I'll just say, while I appreciate that, folks should know this is obviously the beginning of our new fiscal year, so.
Okay.
Right, we're, we're months and months away from.
We look golden right now. You haven't spent anything.
Right.
If I do want to add, however, that.
It's a good start, right?
No, but this is, it has been several months.
Months, yes.
This is not a big deal, okay? Thank you.
You're right.
We appreciate.
If you look back the last few months, there has been a trend.
But the last several months have been that way, and so my comment still stands, but my naivete about this one, okay, I own that one.
Great job on this one. Zero actuals, all the way down the line.
We'll welcome the comments in October once again.
Thank you. All right, give me one second. So I need a motion. We're going to now enter into executive session, and I have a motion to consider personnel matter, and also a motion to consider executive session to discuss contract negotiations where premature disclosure to the public could not, could put the district at a disadvantage. Can I have a second, please? Commissioner Kirk, all those in favor entering executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Passes unanimously. Thank you.